All right. Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, and at this time I'll call the Hamilton Select Board meeting to order for December 19th, 2022, and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have a few announcements and board openings. Historic District Commission has two openings, one for a Board of Realtor and one for an at-large member. Conservation Commission has two openings. Hamilton Housing Authority has one opening. Human Rights Commission has one opening for the Housing Authority. Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee has two openings. Hamilton Council on Aging has two associate member openings, as well as the Finance and Advisory Committee has two associate member openings. And at this time, we have public comment for three minutes on topics not already on our agenda tonight. So if you are on Zoom and wish to speak, raise your hand. If you're here, come up to the podium, state your name. Otherwise, we will proceed.
I think so.
Okay. We have Select Board members and town manager reports now. Any report from you, Bill, tonight?
Nothing to add tonight, no.
All right. Caroline, anything from you?
Nothing to report, thank you, though.
Jamie? Not much report from me. We have, coming up, just to put a bug in your ear, I got a letter from the Historic District Commission. They are looking to expand their jurisdiction within the Historic District to, it sounds like, kind of everything on your property for the most part. So we'll be looking at that letter and discussing it in an upcoming meeting. Also, this last weekend here, the Police Department had this annual Stuffa Cruiser, which I think was pretty successful this year. It's always a good cause. Gives to the Shriners Hospital, gives kids toys after surgeries, which is a great cause. And the Rec Department is also in the midst of discussing the Athletic Field Improvement Project. We have someone here tonight that's going to talk to us a bit about it and talk about some financing, but we'll get to that later on. Anything from your town manager report, Joe?
I will give you one highlight. The cell tower is working. It's on. Cell tower is on. We were notified last Friday that it was actually turned on a couple days prior. They came and did what they had to do, didn't even tell us they were here.
Four bars.
We had an idea that it might be working because several of our TPW workers said, "I got full bars, and I've never had full bars." So we had an idea that it might be working, but we confirmed it on Friday. And so that's the first step. Now, now we turn our attention to a second location and try to continue to improve.
All right. Thank you.
Thought people would want to know about that.
Yep. And up next, we have a Town Clerk report for our 2023 Elections Update with our Town Clerk, Corinne Kael. Welcome, Corinne.
Hi. Thanks, everyone. Good to be here. Just a side note, if I may, first, if folks didn't get an opportunity to drop things off at the Stuffa Cruiser, we do have a box for Toys for Tots, the Marine Corps Toys for Tots program here in the lobby, the front hallway of Town Hall. So if folks want to contribute there, that'd be great, too. So yeah, I'm here to talk about the 2023 election. Seems like it's far off, but it's really not. The election is Thursday, April 6th, which is the Thursday after our April 1st Town Meeting. So I want to let you know the dates and deadlines and the positions that are up for reelection this year. So I'll start with the positions. The Select Board, there is one position available. The position currently held by Jamie Nutson. Town Clerk, position held by me, is already up for reelection. Town Moderator, the one-year appointment is up. Board of Assessors has one position, Joe Shackman's position. Planning Board, three-year term, has two positions, Marnie Crouch and Richard Boroff. Hamilton Wenham Library Trustee, three-year, one position, Mary Jane, MJ Brown from here in Hamilton. And the Regional School Committee does have two positions available, Dana Alara and Anna Sizik. And I will be posting things. I'm going to create a 2023 Local Election tab on my webpage, the Town Hall and Town Clerk webpage, so you'll be able to access all of that. So one, the nomination papers will be available Tuesday, January 10th. They're due back February 16th. So obviously, key days. One slight change to nomination papers, and maybe this is a little quiz. How many, how many signatures were required on the nomination papers?
Seventy-five, right?
Forty. It's always been forty. And you have to adjust it after a state election. It's 1% of the total number of votes for governor, not including the blanks. So we're down to 37 signatures. So a little less work. So if that encourages anybody to consider running, makes it a slight bit easier.
Saves the time with those three less signatures.
Yes. Yeah, three, yeah, takes a little less time. So that's different. And then the other thing that will be different this year is, as a reminder to everyone, with the Votes Act, vote by mail is mandatory for local elections unless we decided to opt out. But I don't have any reason to want to opt out from that. I think our community really likes vote by mail. We had over 40% of those who just voted in the state election vote by mail. And then impersonally voting is not mandatory unless the community wants to opt in. I did meet with my Board of Registars last Friday because the recommendation would come from them, not even from me. And we looked at the data. You know, we had less than 10% of our voters vote in person. And it really does appear to be duplicative, even across the state. I think the number was 7%. Because if people want to vote, other than Election Day, it seems to be that vote by mail really is the way to go. Some communities, though, are going to reverse it. They're not going to do vote by mail, and they're going to do in-person only. So it really depends. But so as we, as of today, we'll absolutely have vote by mail, but will not be recommending through the Board of Registars in-person early voting. Absentee voting still does exist. It's been around forever, did not go away. So if folks are going to be out of town, they can still vote absentee. And in fact, absentee voting is available up until noon the day before the election. So I don't think we're minimizing opportunities for people to vote in the local election. So I think that's the main dates, deadlines. As I said, I will be posting everything on the website. I will be notifying each of the incumbents of the dates, and there are obligations in regards to next steps and deadlines. So that's kind of the next thing on my plate. And then we'll see some of you hopefully on January 10th or 11th for nomination papers. Any questions? Pretty clear? Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Corinne.
It's particularly hot tonight. It's like there's like a lot of
There's a little feedback, yeah.
They're picking up very close.
We tried to correct it, but then we wound up turning off the Zoom. So we got it turned back on, but.
Bill's here. I'm like.
Bill's here.
Figure it out.
That's all right. Okay. Speedy's not here yet.
So what I want to do, the Comcast one first, then?
If the board's okay, we'll take things a little bit out of order since we don't have our National Grid rep with us. We'll move on to the Comcast. Everyone's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we have a public hearing for Comcast up next, which is initial ascertainment discussion and determination of needs for cable license renewal. Attorney Bill August is our attorney, working with us.
I'm not here either, so. But we do have the Comcast folks here.
And you have a statement from Bill. Yeah. So I'm going to read a statement here. "Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Hamilton's initial public hearing on Comcast cable license renewal. I'm Sean Farrell, Chairman of the Select Board, which is the Cable License Franchising Authority under Massachusetts law. By way of background for the public, Comcast's Hamilton cable license does not expire until March 1st, 2025. However, the Federal Cable Act requires a holding of a public proceeding to ascertain the cable-related needs of the community and town during the third year prior to license expiration. The hearing is to provide opportunity for public comment on town needs, Comcast performance, and possible renewal license, and a possible renewal license. Tonight's hearing is merely the opening of the process to allow public comment, and this initial hearing will be followed by additional future opportunities for public comment as we get closer to Comcast's March 1st, 2025 license expiration date. Notice that this hearing was in the local newspapers two successive weeks. Copies of the legal advertisements are here entered into the record as ascertainment hearing Exhibits 1 and 2. Public comments as well as questions to Comcast, if any, should be directed through myself, and I will rule whether they are in order. Please keep your comments no longer than four minutes. If there are any persons present who would like to comment on the Hamilton Comcast renewal needs at this time, and if so, please come to the podium and identify yourself, and let's proceed. Thank you. And just like to say initially, with these hearings, we really appreciate Comcast's participation and funding of our HW CAM and all the programming it provides for our local government, schools, sports, Council on Aging, et cetera." Bill, do you want to say anything?
I hear an echo here. It's a little weird, but I don't know if that speaker's on. Okay. So I'm Bill Melville. I'm the Executive Director of HW CAM. And just want to thank the Select Board for their support, and also Comcast for their support. Since, since the pandemic about two years ago, it's really come to my, it's come, it's come to my opinion that public access is really, really important. And if you looked at the amount of people that reached out to HW CAM before the pandemic, and then after the pandemic, a lot of people really rely on us. And part of that is because of remote participation. And I think that people aren't going to, you know, we don't have newspapers online anymore, right? We don't, we don't have the Patch here anymore. We don't have the Chronicle anymore. So a lot of people look for HW CAM as a resource to what's going on. So like you said, we do Select Board meetings, Planning Board meetings, Finkcoms, community concerts. So this week, even though it's a short week, we have four events happening. So tonight, two, tomorrow night, and two Wednesday. Five events, actually. So I think it's really important that we get the support from Comcast because it's needed. The technology landscape is changing, and to keep up with, with that, we need, we need support for that.
All right. Thank you, sir. And we have Bill August, our attorney, is helping us with this renewal process. Bill, do you want to say anything?
Just the commenting that this is intended under the Federal Cable Act to be a very public and transparent process that, under the Cable Act, should, can, can, can and does continue even after tonight's preliminary hearing to ascertain needs. So that, just for the benefit of the public, that even after the closing of this hearing, the record for ascertaining needs continues to be open until further notice. So that there is, this is just the beginning of doing our homework as a town, as a community, and working in partnership with Comcast to identify needs, to have a good renewal. So the, the record's open. Folks should be, feel welcome to provide additional comments. And just to echo what Bill Melville said, having been involved in this very interesting legislative framework, it's one of the only legislative frameworks where, like major, major, like Fortune 500 companies meet with their community of service, you know, every 10 years or so many years to figure, to figure out these needs. But with the pandemic, it really did shine a light. I, I can tell you, I've been to many, I got, I got to like about a renewal hearing a month, and so many towns said, you know, the, the network TV didn't have any, like, town-specific program on the COVID-19 public health measures. So the local channels really became a somewhat unique source. So I find that to be a very interesting observation by Bill, because, and I've heard it elsewhere. And I think it's important. I just note also, I see Comcast's representative is in attendance, and is on the screen, so just recognize Kerry. And tonight's not a negotiation in any way, so no worries, Kerry. But if you want to just, you know, introduce yourself to the town, and I would ask the Chair to allow that.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Kerry, is it Ms. Morris, if I can read from that far away to the screen?
We can't hear her.
We can't hear you, Kerry. Maybe you take.
She's having audio issues, I think, from the chat.
Yeah, she's having audio issues.
See if she can get off mute.
No.
Can you unmute it?
She's still muted. I can't, it just, for some reason, it's only telling me to ask her unmute.
Right. Kerry, you have to press that mute microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me. It's really great to put names to faces. So just wanted to come on here tonight, and, you know, I'm the Government Affairs Liaison for Comcast. So if any issues arise, or if you have any questions, please come to me. I'm happy to, to help and happy to be here tonight if anyone has questions for me. And it's nice to meet you, Bill.
Bill and Bill, I guess if you can, we've obviously opened the kind of public hearing and input session tonight. If anybody here or on Zoom wants to give any input, please do. But Mr. August, maybe if you could tell a little bit about next steps in the process for, for folks listening in the board? You're on mute, Bill.
You're on mute, Bill.
Based on the identifying of the local needs, which is Phase 1, we will go into Phase 2, which is really where the rubber meets the road, and pull together a draft's renewal license. And then with the approval of the town, and of Bill Melville, who's, who really will give us a reality check on some of the technicalities of the license, like the local architecture, connecting the studio to different locations. We'll circulate that document to Comcast. And under the Cable Act, it specifically provides two procedures. One, circulated to Comcast as part of a public process, and have informal renewal negotiations, and try to come to agreement through some negotiation sessions. The Cable Act also provides for a formal process where, based on the ascertainment, we first issue an RFP to Comcast as the incumbent, and have them respond to the RFP before doing a informal negotiation based on a license. Like, 19 out of 20 towns go with the informal. It cuts to the chase, and it's cheaper and more cost-effective for the town to just circulate the draft license rather than this two-step, do an RFP, see the formal response to the RFP, and then first do a draft license. So it's conceptually a very simple Phase 1, identify needs. And the primary areas of identifying needs are the operating budget of Hamilton Wenham CAM, with us looking at the Hamilton needs. And we know that this studio is on double duty. So right off the bat, you know, they're, they're serving, they're doing municipal meetings and whatnot for two towns. So Comcast really is getting a lot of value for this, and that should be a factor in favor of, you know, robust support for the nonprofit Access Corporation. In addition to the operating budget needs, we look at the capital needs. And those are usually two separate sections of the license, one on the annual support, which is at a very good level now. So we just want to continue it at the level permitted under the Cable Act, at the maximum level. And then the capital needs tend to vary the most from community to community. And Bill Melville and his team, working with Joe as manager, and the town in prior renewals generated, you know, very detailed, itemized equipment budgets. So we would have a very credible empirical cost justification for the financial negotiations. Now, there are a couple of new things in the negotiations, like high-definition PEG. That's new for Comcast as of 2018. So we're trying to update things and make sure we can get one of the three PEG access channels to be high-definition. PEG access. There are some other new technologies. Now, streaming is so good to go from remote video originations. We used to have to need a hard wire to go from, let's say, a school back to the studio hub site. So, you know, we have to look at the license in terms of that local architecture, see if we want to get capital funding for any kind of streaming connections to replace what in some towns are old institutional network connections. So we're going to update the license in terms of the, the funding and the, you know, the local technology. There are some other new legal wrinkles, you know, in terms of what Comcast can charge against the annual 5% payments under a new FCC rule. So we have to wrangle with Comcast a little bit on that. But basically, Phase 1 is just kind of the paving the way, the ascertainment to the, you know, the real deal, coming up with a license that will give the town some security and longevity of the Comcast commitments.
Perfect. Thanks, Bill. Bill Melville, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Bill August is just talking about, we share HW CAM with Wenham. Is Wenham's license on the same renewal schedule? So we're renewing both at the same time?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought.
And just to add, we also support the schools, too. So it's three entities.
And so you'll do kind of what we've done previously in the past. You'll kind of give us a list of what we currently kind of offer, plus what we're kind of looking to add to the programming or coverage that we have, equipment-wise, and et cetera.
Yeah, because there's an end-to-life to the equipment. I know we just did this rack system four or five years ago, I think.
Probably.
And then we did, right when the pandemic hit, we did the streaming part of it. But the playback, which is the hub that's on Railroad Ave, that, that, those computers are pretty old.
And do we have any HD right now? We don't, do we?
No, no.
And that's what we're hoping to get.
That'd be great. Because, you know, I'm streaming this in HD back to the studio, and I have to downgrade it to send it out to Comcast, which is.
Right. Doesn't make quite sense.
Doesn't make quite sense, yeah.
Any questions from the board for Bill Melville, Bill August, or our Comcast representative?
We've gone through this before.
We've been through it a few times before.
And I think it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions from you folks? All right. Thank you, Mr. August.
Yeah, I would just like to add a thank you, because I did a renewal a few years ago on the horizon with, with Joe and, and Bill Melville. And I kind of worked hard on him and disappeared. But I just really want to thank everyone who was involved, because they were there at every turn to, you know, provide me information and be helpful. So you have a good team there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you, Ms. Morris, for joining us. Nice to meet you.
Okay. Good night, folks.
Thanks, Bill.
You can take into the public hearing without National Grid. I don't know how controversial it is, so to.
Yeah, I don't know if they're, if, I mean, we can, if we have questions, we can table them, I guess, or table it. All right. Up next, we have a public hearing for National Grid. Pole placement at Porter Lane and Asbury Street. On the plan is number 30621466. Discussion and vote, and this is in your packets. There's a little map and the notice about the hearing. And if I looked at it correctly, it's just a support.
Yeah, it's a.
Cross-arm brace.
Push brace.
Push brace. So it's not a relocation, it's just a stabilizing, basically.
Right. I believe there's a, a good amount of pressure on the, on the pole because of the, it's at a curve.
The corner.
It's at, at a curve. So the tension from the wires coming from either side pulls it. So they want to support that with a brace.
Any questions on that? So is anybody here? Nobody is here from any of Butters, and our National Grid rep, and I forget her name, and I've said it a thousand times.
Sabida.
Sabida is not here as well. Typically, we kind of grill Sabida on double polls.
We haven't, we, everything else, we got to bargain.
I don't think we do at the moment. I think, I asked Joe last week or something how we were doing on double poles, and he hasn't got back to me, but I think we're in pretty good shape for him. Some of the holdups for double poles are some of our fire signaling stuff on them, on some of them. So I think we've taken care of all that. I think they've done a pretty good job of getting rid of most of them.
I was trying to figure out if this was the side of the street without the sidewalk or with the sidewalk. But I can't really tell from the sketch.
It's.
I'm get, you know, knowing where, how.
Looks like it goes over this. I was trying to figure out if it goes over the sidewalk. How's that work? But I'm assuming they have a detail for that, but.
You put it in the Google Map, GIS or something.
I did, but it's like, I can't.
Didn't come up, really.
I'm assuming it's the side with the sidewalk, but I can't really.
I think it's on the edge of the sidewalk.
Yeah. So that was my only question, was how do they deal with the sidewalk?
Yeah, how does it, does it obstruct anything?
Well, we could, we could postpone a vote until Sabina shows up tonight or next meeting if we want to. It's not like, sometimes we have a kind of a crunch on these, because it's like a homeowner wanting to get a hookup on a new house or something like that.
Right, and it's not that, yeah.
We don't want to hold up the project. This is existing conditions, and it's just improving the existing conditions. It's not a move, a move or a remove or add or anything. What do we think? Do you have questions, Bill, that you want?
No, I'm, I'm, I was just more curious about.
All right. If nobody has any hesitation, so I'll take a motion to approve it.
I'm, move that we approve the pole placement at Porter Lane and Asbury Street, reference plan 30621466.
All right. A second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, we have requests by the Hamilton Wenham Athletic Field Improvement Committee for 2023 Annual Town Meeting Action. We have discussion. So come on up, fellas. Jay, you're going to speak tonight, only if needed. You're just going to observe. All right.
He nominated me.
Lucky you.
He's got muscle.
My name is Peter Gordo, 416 Bridge Street, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Hamilton Wenham Athletic Facility Improvement Committee, and, as well as informally, the school district. As you may, well, just a little bit of background, I think you're all aware that there's been a move afoot for better than a decade to try and bring some improved facilities to the high school and middle school athletic complex. That effort over the last couple of years really has gained some critical mass and momentum. We have a, we have a school committee that's very supportive. We have an administration that's very supportive. And we seem to have a lot of townspeople who are very excited about trying to address a real need at the, at the, at the school complex. We're one of very few schools in the KPN League that has no turf and no lights on any of our athletic facilities. We're also one of the few schools that doesn't have tennis at the complex. And one of the goals of this, one of the goals of, has always been to try and bring And one of the goals of this, one of the goals of, has always been to try and bring students back to campus. Currently, we've got students going to the library to practice. We've got students going to Patton Park, previously Pingree Park, for tennis practice. So a lot of kids leaving campus every day, jumping in a friend's car, driving to a, driving to an offsite location, which, you know, for obvious reasons isn't ideal. And the condition of our facilities is also, at this point, somewhere between inadequate and occasionally dangerous. We lose, we lose games to unplayable fields. We aren't able to host, we're not able to host state tournament games. When we have a home opportunity, we end up at Gordon over at St. John's Prep, because our facilities, simply the dimensions of our facilities don't meet state requirements. So that's just all by way of background. But the real reason we're here tonight is that the, again, as you're probably aware, the superintendent currently intends to bring this project to the Springtown meeting. And, you know, seeking funding. And one of the pieces of funding will be, there are three, there are several pieces of funding. One will be, you know, the taxpayers and the debt exclusion. Another will be private fundraising and things like, we hope, CPC grants. And another piece is the so-called patent fund. And back in 2015, you may recall that the town meeting voted to set aside half a million dollars of proceeds from the sale of the patent property, what became Patent Ridge, for future athletic improvement facilities with an idea that it would be put towards the turf project. And I think we are finally at that point where we may be in a position to use this money, and it's going to take a town meeting action to release it. And it's also going to take some coordination with with the town of Wenham. Because as I recall, and I can read it to you, the, 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 the motion required that Wenham provide their matching fair share. So, you know, using, using the typical formula, and I don't know whether these are exact numbers, but if, if we're going to, if Hamilton is going to contribute half a million dollars, we'd be looking for, we, the community would be looking for Wenham to contribute their third $250,000. And so we need to try and start those wheels in motion to, to see if the town would release that money, you know, subject to a number of other things, primarily this project being approved overall by the, by the voters at town meeting and again at the polls. So I'm sure I'm leaving lots of things out, but I'm happy to answer questions or, I guess, you know, really seeking your input as to how we, how we move this forward.
So to Peter's point, there's a lot of moving parts here. We had a chairs kind of meeting with the school department and the Wenham Select Board and FinCom representatives a week ago now, maybe?
Just under a week ago, it was last Tuesday or Wednesday.
And we discussed this a little bit. Our CPC, and we have our chair here tonight, Jay Butler, he can correct me if I miss anything. But our CPC so far has been willing to have the conversation about money and donating to the, or at least bringing to the town meeting and having a grant for the field improvement. From what I've heard and seen, I guess, the Wenham CPC is the opposite at the moment.
We hope to change their perspective. We, they had a, they had their annual, hey, town, what's, what should we be focused on meeting about a month ago? And one of our members made a presentation, and we hope that they have an open mind, because I think if they're, you know, representing their constituents, they're going to find that there's a lot of support amongst their constituents for this project.
Right, and I guess I would implore your group, since you have a substantial energized group, to really gather that support and start flooding the Select Board there and CPC with emails in support of the project. Because I think unless they get that, they've dug in their heels in the past on different things, and this may be one of those items. And I think with our CPC, we have to, I guess, there's two levels. If our CPC gives, then we're, we would want to match Wenham CPC with their ratio of the contribution. I think the same with the stabilization fund release. It's the same kind of thing. So there's a lot of different factors that have to all align to have all of this happen. I'd, I'd like to say it would be smooth sailing, but you never know with, with multiple parties involved.
And one of the things that I've been hoping is that Wenham's match of the patent, that they wouldn't use their CPC to match the patent fund, because if we did that, we'd presumably be leaving a lot of money on the table.
Right, and that's, that's my kind of worst case scenario thoughts on that, that in the, and John McGrath is online. He can also chime in too, because he was at the same meeting I was at when their Select Board and FinCom were talking, and I had brought this up about that the money would have to be kind of general fund free cash, something like that from Wenham or raise inappropriate. We didn't get much warm and fuzzy feeling that they were going to do that. So, you know, it's going to take a lot of support from the Wenham side, I think, to move their administration to move in that direction.
Who is the, who is the right body to be working with Wenham, you know, on this match? Is it, you know, I, I've always assumed that it would be best from Select Board to Select Board, but.
We have not been successful in that.
I was just going to say, we.
Let's just talk about, let's talk about us for a second.
Let's talk about us for a second.
So I think that, you know, we can talk about it, do a straw, but I think you're going to find the supporters here to, to do what we need to do to fund the field. So and what's it's all or nothing from us? Is that how it works? It's written that way? It's all, either we, we give only if Wenham matches?
The, the stabilization, the field, turf field stabilization fund was adopted by town meeting with a requirement that, that want to provide its.
Whatever the apportionment.
The portion match that would be required. And the CPC has generally in the past on, the only program has done the same thing.
Right, and so if we say, if Wenham says we're going to only give 50K free cash, and we can only match the 100 or whatever the ratio is, and then we have that other 400K in that stabilization fund, that it's going to take a two-thirds vote to move it out of that for whatever purpose it is. Be it, I mean, right now, I think that when we set it up 2015, it was thought that would be for athletic field improvement with an astroturf field. But we left a little bit open, so it could be field improvements in general. Could be a, you know, Donovan Fields water stuff or whatever else. But the, the main thought was that it would be used for this project. So it kind of all depends on Wenham, and it's tough to determine, because Wenham meets after us on the same day typically, so.
There is a, there is another scenario that we've discussed that, I don't know whether I should get down this rabbit hole now, but if Wenham, if Wenham was not willing to match its fair share with free cash, and we, and therefore we were only left with what the two CPCs might do, I wonder whether you, you split the balance of the project. Each town takes its, each town takes its proportionate share that it's now financing, and Hamilton takes its half million dollars and immediately, you know, either never borrows or pays down its share of the debt. So it got 100% of the benefit of that. And therefore, to me, that would perhaps negate Wenham's obligation to match, because Hamilton would have gotten 100% of the benefit.
The challenge I see with that is that likely, the way this is, from our discussion at the five chairs meeting last week, the way this is likely to be funded is through debt exclusion that the schools would seek. And schools would take the debt and then assess us, our share, our requisite shares through the assessment. So we wouldn't be paying directly against the, the, the debt.
Why couldn't?
Because it would be taken on our names.
Why couldn't your share be immediately, you know, your share could be a half a million dollars smaller than it would be, you know, according to the exact apportionment.
We can investigate that with Vinnie and Eric Tracy, see if that's a possible option. But you'd still need the, you'd still need a two-thirds vote of the majority of town meeting to approve that funding approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is John McGrath, if I could make a couple of comments.
Sure.
I think it's pretty clear this is a school project, and Eric is sort of leading the charge. And what we agreed last week was that the school needs to, that the school and the two towns need to come together and communicate what's coming. And what's coming is a fields project, which, for which there's a lot of support in both towns, I believe, and in the school committee, and a new school project. And what we agreed that made sense is to ramp up the communication to the towns as to what's happening. So for example, one of the questions we asked was, you know, on the fields project, hey, what's the current budget? Is it the same 13 million? Has it changed? What's the status of the fundraising? But I think bottom line, it's a school project, and I think what we need to do is energize the three entities around what's coming with the schools, with the fields project being a big part of it. And I do believe, we talked about some of these warrant articles that'll, that'll probably emerge next April. And they would be sort of contingent on the two towns getting together and, you know, advancing support for these projects. So in all due respect, I think coming in and asking the Select Board to kind of take this and kind of, you know, manage the communications, I think that's probably not the best formula. I think the best formula is to connect with Eric, stand up a communication approach to both towns, get all the financials updated, and generate community support around everything that's coming down the pike. That, that's sort of my take as we sort of came out of the five chairs meeting last week. I, I do agree, there's a lot of support to get this done. But I also asked Eric, well, what if you only got, you know, a third of your total budget? You know, what are your priorities for the fields? You know, I said, common practice would be, you know, prioritize of the 13 million dollars. You know, what's, what's the most important piece? And just to say it's all or nothing, that doesn't really resonate with me. I think we owe the taxpayers, hey, here's our plan. Here's how we want to do the project and, and build community support through a really effective communication approach. So that's sort of, you know, that was sort of the takeaway that I got. And I think we need to rally around this to try to make it happen, so those are some of my thoughts.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, when will, when will the budget sort of financial structure be public? How much?
I don't think it's, I, I don't think we've, I, I think it's been public for a long time in terms of, you know, the general, the general approach. We had been talking about probably a 13 million dollar project that did not include any sort of amenities, building bathrooms or a concession stand or anything like that. And at a recent meeting of the facilities group, the, the group felt strongly that if we're going to do this, we ought to, you know, try and do it the right way, which is to include that bathroom facility. So we don't have, we presently don't have the engineer's budget or the engineer's estimate for what we're adding, but I would suggest that we've probably taken it from a 13 million dollar project to a 15 million dollar project. And the, we've always talked about sort of a one-third, two-thirds relationship between a debt exclusion and fundraising. And the fundraising, you know, the way we're accounting for fundraising is, what's in that is private fundraising, whatever we generate from the patent fund, whatever we generate from the two CPCs, and whatever we generate from any other state grants that we're able to obtain. So that's, you know, if it's a 15 million dollar project, we're talking about, you know, five and 10 type of thing.
So, so in October, I had laid out some financial projections for cost using 12 million 890 with four and a half million dollars worth of private funding. I mean, I have these numbers burned in my brain here. Now I'm hearing it's 15 million, and what's the fundraising commitment?
A third of that.
So not four and a half, but less?
We've al, no, we've always taken the, we've, we've taken the approach that we'd take on a third of the, of the need. So it's a 15 million dollar project. We're signing up to raise five between private fundraising, CPCs, and the patent fund.
Okay, so just from a financial standpoint, in the space of two months, the number's gone from 12 890 to 15, and the fundraising sounds a little less certain than it did two months ago. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you some financial, financial gut check here in terms of, you know, the budget's now up 2 million, and the fundraising sounds a little less certain. So part of the, part of the conversation really needs to be, what's the budget? What's the fundraising? And what, what do the towns need to project? And get, get that really solid. And then let's get in front of the, the taxpayers after the first of the year with an information session. Hey, here's what we're trying to do, and, and start to build that community support. It may already be there, but I just think we need to solidify the numbers and say, here's what we're trying to do.
Peter, for.
That would be my recommendation.
To John's point about fundraising, what have you raised so far?
We haven't, we haven't obtained any substantial fund, you know, fundraising at this point.
Have you taken any pledges or anything like that?
No, we've been, the, there is, there's an active fundraising group, but until very recently, the scope of the project wasn't fully fleshed out. So I think it's been very, it's been, we've not really been in a position to pursue formal fundraising to this point. So it's, this is, this is an issue.
I was going to say, that makes me a little nervous, to John's point there. We've only got a handful of months before this goes to a town meeting vote, and you're pledging X number of fundraising, and if you don't get it, that stunts the project or stops it, depending on, you know, we're not going to raise it appropriate the difference, so.
I agree, I agree 100%. And this is, this is, this is a sort of an internal struggle that we're trying to figure out, because it's, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to deal with town meeting schedules and, you know, a project that's been fluid until very recently and, you know, trying to.
Right, and because if it, if it passes the town meeting, it should shovel in the ground as soon as possible.
It'd be good to see like a calendar, right? Like, like we do a budget calendar, right? And what certain milestones would be good if you guys had a calendar of when you had hit certain things. But the one thing I didn't hear you mention, you mentioned the patent and the, and the fundraising CPC. We didn't mention the school. The school has, what we voted on in the last time meeting was the school was going to create an internal fund.
They're going to do 1.7.
Is that, so we're going to pull that out of E and D and put it in their stabilization fund?
Right, yeah, that's our even budget.
1.7?
That would, in, in my way of thinking, that would offset, that would, that would reduce the, that would reduce the school's share, the debt exclusion.
Okay.
Not the fundraising.
Okay, that's good.
Right, so if I remember the last time you folks came to the Select Board meeting, the, sort of the status was about the same, only we were hoping that we would get the stabilization vote done. And then that was then going to be a trigger to draw in some of the committed fundraising money. And that sounds like, although that vote happened, it didn't then cause people to ante up on the fundraising side. So anyway, the community support's there. I just think the, the logistics and the, you know, firmness of the project is kind of going sideways a little, and we need to firm it up and kind of make it happen. So that would be what I hope we can get done here before we get. We're going to be drafting up articles with Eric for the town meeting, and the FinCom is going to be drafting up their commentary, I don't know, third week of January. So we need to kind of get our act together and try to get this thing tuned up so we can get in front of the voters and then hold an information session before the town meetings. So that, we just owe a nice, clean, clear story to the taxpayers. I think the votes will be there from the school population or the school supporters to get this done. We just need to clean up the message a bit, I think.
But the articles are.
Those are my thoughts.
We want to release the CPC funds, and we want to vote for the debt exclusion. Those are the two things that will be on.
And the stabilization.
Three things.
Three things. So there's going to be three articles. I think we all know that even if the FinCom says they hate it, it'll still pass. I think what I'm trying to figure out.
Absolutely.
There's three things, and I think, John, what you're asking is, what are the amounts? Right? We just, we just need the amounts. There's going to be three articles. We need to know the amounts for those three articles. But other than that, there's, I mean, we're certainly not kicking this to a special town meeting in the fall, and we're definitely not kicking it out a full 12 months.
Wenham is the big driver.
Right.
Yeah, we need to get Wenham on it.
Match on the CPC fund, on everything.
Yes.
And we're saying we would not put the articles on the warrant if we didn't have a pre-indicator from Wenham.
If Wenham didn't have it on the warrant.
Right, if Wenham just refused outright to put on the warrant. If Wenham just refused outright to put on the warrant, our hand would be forced, we wouldn't put on, I mean, we could put on the warrant, but no one would probably approve it. And if it did, I don't, I just don't think it would work.
Well, what do we mean, no one would approve it? Certainly, Hamilton residents would come out and approve it, and then they would make Wenham have a special town meeting in the fall and make them feel terrible.
Well, I just think.
Like, this is politics, not, not process.
True. But I think too, we'll, I mean, I would assume we will write our warrant articles contingent on Wenham's approval.
Right.
On whatever that ratio is.
We can definitely write the articles that.
You know, not to exceed.
We approved this subject to approvals of such and such and such and such by.
With some sort of sunset clause.
And, and, and then it's the clause in their court.
The next step for these guys is, we need clear language for the three articles with the amounts, with contingency on Wenham.
Right. And I would say, all these articles, in as much as I'm enjoying the involvement of the group with Peter and Jay, et cetera, those articles are going to come from Eric Tracy.
From Eric, yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there'll be five school warrant articles. First one's the budget.
Yep.
The second one's the Fields, the third one is the school stabilization item, you know. And then the fourth one will be the Hamilton Stabilization Fund, the patent, the patent fund, and then the last one will be the CPC. So, there are five school warrant articles, two of them have the Fields project stuff buried in them. So, anyway.
Corinne, if I can just ask a question of Peter real quick. Peter, when you were talking about the kind of the private fundraising side, were you including CPC and town money in that?
Yeah.
That's in your total number?
Right. So, private fund, private fundraising, the patent fund, CPC would be numbers that would, amounts that would count towards the third of fundraising.
All right.
That's just how we've always done the math internally.
Okay.
I'm sure it's on the schedule, but I just want to be sure we're clear. Any ballot language that is expected to be seen on the April 6 ballot is due in the town clerk's office by March 2, which means it's already been voted by Board of Selectmen, Select Board, in both towns, obviously. Okay? Just wanted to make sure that that March 2 date, and that's not flexible.
Thank you for pointing that out. I knew it was early after February, the end of February there.
Yeah, I think we have a meeting on the, is it the 20th is the last meeting before that?
February, something like that.
Eight weeks, Peter, let's go.
What's that?
Eight weeks, let's go.
Can we talk after this meeting, you and I?
Need a big sponsor for the, for the, for the press box.
Yeah.
So, the press box is one thing we're not touching under, under the current proposal.
Jamie or Caroline, any other questions for Peter?
No, I mean, I want to reiterate that, like, we want this to happen, and we want to help. I don't, I worry when we have meetings like this, that there's some sense that we're.
Even though we've beat you up a little bit.
That we're road blocking.
Your concerns are fair, perfectly fair.
And so, how do we, you know?
We welcome you to come back every meeting.
Yeah, and like, the PR of it is.
Come back, give us an update every meeting, because we want to build support, right? So, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and the articles will be on the warrant, we need the language, we need the amounts.
Yep.
And I just want to make sure we're very clear about, like, nobody's trying to keep anything off the warrant. We recognize that they can, should, and will be on there, we just need clarity in language, and then get the support.
And Peter, your question earlier about the kind of mechanism to get Wenham to move in lockstep is having myself or this board reach out. I would say this, I don't know who suggested it, but I think Eric Tracy would probably be the best conduit between the three entities. And if, if he needs anything, let him know, I'll write a letter of support or whatever, but I think that's probably the best, because oftentimes, our message goes like this when we ask for different things.
Fair enough.
And also, Eric has more support of the school community behind him. And then I would also, as I said earlier, kind of implore those sports parents, et cetera, to start email, letter writing, phone calls, all that stuff, both of those boards, to get them, because we have a short runway here. And, you know, I think we've got a lot of support in the community, but we need that administrative support from both of those groups to actually have it come to fruition. So, I think that's the key. Joe, did you have any comments?
No, I just, Peter, picking up on the idea you had, as I was sitting here listening to everything, if this is actually going to come forward as a school project, and the school's going to basically be charging us an assessment based on our share of it, I just want to double check it with Town Council, but it's very likely that it's possible for us to vote that $500,000 contingent upon, excuse me, adoption of the program by Wenham as well. But I think that's, that's probably a good, good possibility. Because the, the, the reason for the language, the way it was, was to make sure that Hamilton wasn't putting in and not being matched by Wenham. If this, we could potentially use this as just a way to pay our share, then that's a reasonable request.
And of course, I think it would be better if we could get Wenham to match their share, because it just means.
More money that way and less money on the tax rate.
Right, exactly.
But I'll have to check with Town, double check with Town Council.
And thank you for working on this.
Yeah.
Your effort is appreciated.
Peter, I can remember 12 years ago at the Rec Center with you and my wife and everybody else trying to get this thing started, so I appreciate you sticking around.
Somehow, we're going to get it done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have, oop, lost my agenda here. I think up next, we have to appoint a new member to the Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee and determine term lengths for all current members, discussion and vote. Yeah, come on up, introduce yourself, and we can.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Moran, 21 Garfield Avenue, and I have applied for the Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee, and I very much like to join the group, but Jack Simon's over here, and would appreciate your approving my application.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Well, I guess relative to the next point, would you like a two-year or one?
I have a suggestion on that. So, the original bylaws approved by the select board called for the first term, the first initial appointment, there would be three people appointed to a three-year term and two people appointed to a two-year term.
Wait, two-year and, two-year and one-year?
Two-year and one-year, sorry.
Yep, yep.
So, what we, what I would recommend is that the first three people that came in get the two-year terms, and you actually vote to make them two and a half, so that they will all sunset in June, well, make them all sunset in the June of '24 and '25. So, the first, so the one and a, the one-year terms will actually be one and a half-year terms. And then if you were to adopt it that way, then the first three people that came in would have the two and a half years expiring in June of '25, and Jeannie and whoever gets appointed next would have one and a half years expiring in June of '24.
Okay. One and a half is fine for me.
Perfect.
All right, so let's, let's start with a motion to approve Jeannie to the HEIC.
So moved.
All right, second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're looking forward to this group getting going and giving us some direction and hints.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then I would accept a motion to have the appointments for the first three members that we've already appointed be a two-year term.
Two and a half years, basically.
But a two and a half year term currently, so that they would expire in June '25.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Second by Caroline, any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And then I would further take a motion that we, with our, can we have one more opening now?
Yeah.
With the current opening, we just filled, and the upcoming to do a one and a half year term expiring in June of '24, and thereafter, a one-year term.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. HDC, Hamilton Development Corporation Infrastructure Grant Application Discussion with HDC Chair Rick Mitchell. Been a long time since I've seen you, Rick. How've you been?
Yeah, all right.
Rick and I just had a three-hour meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just go from one meeting to another.
Great.
Good to see you guys. This floor is vibrating here. Does anybody?
It's the heat, and it's a part of the character of the building.
It's the character.
Don't worry, it's not going to collapse, it's not going to collapse.
We've had the structural study, it's not going to fall down just yet.
Well, if I start vibrating when I'm talking, then you'll know why. Okay, there should be a memo in your, in your information packet that summarizes what we're doing. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to.
Hold on one second, Rick, I can't remember if it was in the packet or if Lori sent it to us.
It's in there. I know I sent it to Lori, because Lori was chasing me around going, I have to get it, I have to get it, and I sent it to her before.
All right, then it's there.
Yeah, it's on page 14.
Okay, I missed it. Thank you. Rick, sorry.
I won't go through the whole thing, because the memo summarizes it, but basically, Masworks is an infrastructure fund for cities and towns to make improvements, to enhance economic development. They like to tie it to housing, but it's really designed to improve projects that will enhance economic development in a downtown or other areas. And it includes sewers, utility extensions, streets, road curbs, parking, water treatment systems, public parks, pedestrian bicycle ways. So, myself and Scott Mattern have met with Joe and Tim Olson to talk about HDC spearheading an application process for Masworks infrastructure funding in the downtown commercial district, where the HDC has its authority, which is really Linden, Bay, Asbury, and starts with a W, I should know this.
Winthrop.
Thank you, Winthrop. So, that's the general area that, that we have the legislative authority to work within. And we're thinking of Railroad Avenue as a, as sort of the first attempt at this, although with discussions with Joe and Tim and other people, they've said, well, really, shouldn't we be doing a much larger project that goes down Bay Road to the pool parking lot and would include the Winthrop on both sides of Bay Road? And I, and I would say, wholeheartedly, absolutely, we should be treating them as a whole piece. So, but that's not, we can't go beyond our sort of meets and bounds, and we can assist the town in putting that application together and getting some of the documentation, and the town may elect to pursue that. But we're going to focus on Railroad Avenue, because that's an area where we sort of have some general authority, although it is town property. So, if we were successful in getting a pre-design grant and got the engineering and bid document, you know, preparation for bid documents, it would be the town that would ultimately have to fund these, but we could go back to Masworks and ask for implementation funding. So, that's sort of a quick overview of where we're going. As the memo says, you can use it for pre-development, pre-construction, direct construction, and construction administration. Those that are going to be most competitive are those ones that are in advanced design or permitting, in other words, they're shovel-ready, they really have a preference for shovel-ready projects, leverage private development, or align with other programs spending targets, which is infrastructure for them. They're also favorable to those communities that are kicking in funds in the application. So, the HDC within its means is certainly willing to kick in funds towards an application for pre-designed work to make, just try and make us more competitive. The applications open in June, January 20, and they go through a multi-step process. They actually are, I haven't been through it before, but you put in an application, and then they, they will get back to us and tell us where its strengths are, where its weaknesses are, whether they think it's competitive, what we might need to do to make it more competitive, and then we can decide if we're going to submit a final application or not. So, as I mentioned, and at the bottom here, we're looking really at Railroad Avenue and the sidewalk improvements, roadway improvements there. We'd love to go across Bay Road, but that's a state highway, which is going to involve a much more lengthy, detailed discussion with Mas DOT. So, we're starting on a very long journey here with a small piece, and this is going to take multiple years to accomplish. Just wanted to give you an overview of what we were thinking, we've talked to Joe and Tim about this, we got the go-ahead to, sure, go ahead, you know, prepare the documents, and we're willing to do that, and do the research, and talk to people at Masworks, and find out exactly what we need to do, and see if we can get this application going. Once we get a pre-application in or written, we'll talk to Joe again and Tim to make sure they're okay with that. We certainly can come back to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, excuse me, and preview what we're hoping to submit funding for. And that's pretty much it on the Masworks piece.
Masworks is, every year, they have funds?
Yes, yes.
Have we ever gotten, received money from them before, or would this be a?
No, we've never applied.
No, you've never, you've never applied, and you've never received funding.
We've done community connector grants.
Masworks, Masworks grew out of a bunch of disparate grant programs back during, prior to the devout Patrick administration, there were.
You know what the, what the total Masworks grant will be in 2022 or 2023?
I haven't seen it announced yet. With change in administration, there's really no way of knowing what the.
They've asked for 400 million.
Okay.
So, it's a pretty big pot.
Right, substantial.
And, you know, I was just.
We still don't know what the administration's focus is going to be on infrastructure improvements, so.
Right, no, but the, in the FY 20, what are we, '24 budget, '23 budget?
FY '24 budget, there's no House One budget yet.
Right.
The government has taken office.
The Baker administration put in a request for 400 million.
Right.
They just didn't get to it.
Right.
So, I don't think there's a problem with it, but you know what's going on? If you've been in Beverly, Tozer Road, Beverly High School, all that stuff that's going on there, that was a 1.7 million dollar Masworks grant to do the infrastructure improvements there. So, that's an example of the kinds of things that.
Good, that's a good example. And what, do you have an idea what your funding will need to be for the first step? Is it 100,000, is it?
We, well, I can only, I can only guess, we're looking at, we're looking at the engineering document phase. When we did a, we had a landscape architect look at Railroad Ave, and I think, I know many of you people have seen what it looked like, because we were burying the poles or not burying the poles, and really sprucing it up. And that was probably four years ago, and it was a capital budget of a million dollars to do the non-pole improvements, sidewalks, roadways. I have no idea what the engineering would be for that. I'm guessing it should be pretty small, like maybe 50,000, 75,000, I really don't know. That's the next step, and we're going to have to work with Joe and Tim on that. We have to provide an engineering estimate, you know, from a real engineer that says, okay, here's the scope, and here's.
Do you put up an RFP, or you just pay a engineer to do a preliminary?
Well, we may, we may pay an engineer, and we'll talk to Joe about who pays that engineer.
We've got a couple of things. So, HDC has quasi-public agency, has different procurement rules.
I was going to say, can HDC?
We can also, because it's a, because it's a professional services, consultant services, we don't have to go out to bid, although sometimes it is worth it for us to solicit for a couple of different bids. We'll, we'll put that in the hands of Tim. He's, he's our, you know, practice, practice procurement professional, so.
I mean, I'm in favor of the project. I was trying to figure out the best way to be successful with the grant. So, it's like, do we want to just, why not, did you look at just paying for the design services, so you're actually more shovel-ready? Wouldn't it make it more beneficial to get money? Or can you go back to them any year? It doesn't take away from your ability to win two years in a row?
Well, that's a, that's a very, that's a good question. I haven't gotten that far, so.
Is it unusual to win two years?
I will say, well, no.
Money two years in a row?
Communities that typically get multiple, Masworks infrastructure grants are gateway cities. So, Lowell, Lawrence, you know, Havre have all gotten multiple years. Most other communities, you know, get one if they apply every 10 years or so. But that's for construction, that's for the big, many grants. Right now, I'm talking about going for a smaller grant. Something to bear in mind is that this grant is tied to the MBTA zoning after next year.
Right, and I was going to bring that up. That's the fly in the ointment, and.
Right, if we're out of compliance, we're not on the table at all.
Say again?
As if we're out of compliance with that zoning, where we don't even have a skin in the game.
And we have until 2024 to come into compliance, so we're kind of like trying to slide in under that deadline, and that may, if we're successful, may provide an impetus, maybe a taste for the town to go, oh, gee, you know, there's real money to be had if we actually move on that MBTA zoning. Anyway, it's part of our strategic plan. We've done the housing part, we want to move on to infrastructure, this is a pot of money that's available, and we thought it would be crazy not to go after it, so.
So from us, I see, I'm looking at your next steps here, identify projects, gain approval from town leaders, substantiate amount, request with engineering cost estimates or similar documentation. So I'm going to assume and speak from the board, even though I shouldn't, that we like grant money. All we have to do is apply for it, so I don't think we want to refuse money from the state to help us improve our infrastructure, et cetera. But would you, I'm sure in the part of the grant process is some type of endorsement letter from some local person or the town manager or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
Which we'll provide at the time. But as far as identifying projects, I agree with your kind of possible projects here. The first one is the one that I would pick, but do you need, as HTC and filling out this application, for us to help you pick one of these priorities, or?
I, well, that's up to the, I mean, if you wanted to go big and say, hey, I want to do, you know, Bay Road from Linden to, you know, Patton Park, that would be a town thing, and Joe shaking his head going, no, we don't want to do it.
State's not going to give us grant money to do Bay Road, that's the state road. They may agree to invite us into a process to figure out how the state would do Bay Road, but they're not going to give us grant money for us to touch Bay Road.
Yeah.
Our best focus through HTC will be on Railroad Ave, and Willow.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking Railroad Ave and Willow, or connecting across Asbury to Patton Park and down to the pool area.
Well, yeah, I think that's a good point, is it could be Railroad, Winthrop, and Asbury, since there's, you know, so.
Right, that, in the overlay, basic.
Right, right. So I think that makes the most sense, and that's a good idea, and so then we might as well go for everything we can get.
Yeah, that's my thought, because as Joe was saying earlier, that, you know, for our size town and what we have, it's probably a one grant to do something, and then 10 years or never. So we should ask for Disneyland, basically, right? So.
Sounds good to me.
See what we can get. Does everyone kind of agree with?
Yeah.
Ask for the pre-designed funding, or ask for the construction funding?
Well, you know, that gets back to your question, is should we just jump ahead and say, forget the pre-construction design funding? And I'm not committing HTC to this, but to say, pay whatever number that is.
Use free cash to fund the design.
For the detailed engineering.
Yeah, I guess my thought on that, you may not like it, but I would like HTC to pay for some of that preliminary stuff, and then town can get behind it, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Because you have some cash in your kitty, so, you know, that would help us out, because that's not taking taxpayer dollars. I mean, it is, but it's a different mechanism, right? But you're paying meal stacks money and some of the stuff you got from the sale of Willow, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you did some of that design work, and then we got it to basically shovel-ready, and then we went ahead and put that in, I think we'd get more bang for our buck and get a shot at it.
That's my thought.
With more money, too, right?
I like it.
Because otherwise, they're going to be like, oh, yeah, here's your 50 grand for your feasibility study.
And they'll see you in 10 years.
They'll see you in 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I think that's.
I don't know, there's some history to know whether that's, you can get two years or three years in a row funding, but anyways, yeah, no, I'm in favor of it, however we can help and support, and if we need to match some funds to make it happen, like you can come back to us and tell us what it is, but we would want the investment to be from your funds first, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's why we're having this conversation, it's part of our strategic plan, is like, we have a pot of money for infrastructure improvements, and we want to get going on that. And just an up, quick update on the little park that's on the corner of Railroad and Bay.
The Christmas tree, pine tree?
Christmas tree, that's owned by the condominium trust, three members, TD Bank, the vet building, and the medical building that Dave Cutter bought. The medical building, and he's a 51% shareholder in the condominium trust. We're talking to Dave about what we can do to turn that into a pocket park. He's talked to the other board members, and they're supportive of that, and he said, come back to us with a plan. So basically, we're going to have to go to.
To be part of it, right.
We're going to have to go to a landscape architect and come up with some kind of plan for a pocket park there, which we're pretty excited about. Doesn't mean that he'll do it, but he'd like to see a plan, and I think he's generally supportive of the idea of doing something nice down there, so we're going to be pursuing that. And also, wayfinding, the signage down there, and that's really part of the parking study that we co-funded two years ago, that I know Patrick Refit's working on, and hopefully there'll be maybe implementation in the spring, is, want to work with Tim on that in terms of signage, you know, that would be part of the pocket park, is there's just no signage about what's downtown, and, you know, so we're going to be working on that as well. So that's the HTC world, and hopefully we'll be back to you maybe in two or three months with an update on where we're going on with the application.
One last thing, and I know it's a bit out of our control, is, and Rick, you and I've had this conversation, and I think I've had it with Joe a little bit, and we've talked downtown improvements, and visioning, and aesthetics, and all kinds of stuff, and refresh my memory on the post office. Is there any way to negotiate anything with that building or that site at all, or is that strictly, it is what it is?
Well, the local postmaster has actually been very cooperative. We tried the, first off, we went to the postmaster, and the post office being the post office, he had to go to his supervisor, and the supervisor said, you know, because we wanted to buy the vinyl covers to those ugly yellow.
Yeah, yeah.
Things, and he said, no. But he's since retired, and our local postmaster has been favorably disposed, said, well, let's just try it.
Do we have two postmasters, because we have two post offices in town?
No, I think, I think that the person that manages this one is not a full postmaster. I think that they work somehow in tandem.
And I have no idea why we have two post offices in town.
Because it's Hamilton and South Hamilton.
See that guy there? Teddy Roosevelt?
Yeah.
The postmaster general built a house at the end of Rock Maple. It's gone now, that was.
Where the pappas is are, kind of?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's gone now. The house, when he died, the mansion there was, the brothers hated each other, they cut it in half, and they moved it up to the top of Meyer Lane. So there's two houses up there. And, so anyway, so we've actually, and we're working with Robin Davis, as you may know, who is very active in the downtown. She actually went out and got pricing for those. She went for the deluxe premium ones, and we said, no, that's a little too expensive. So we're trying to do, so the answer is, we want to get those yellow things covered, and then move on to the flower boxes, and maybe some benches. And I've talked to our attorney for the HTC, and she's just said, that's fine, as long as you retain ownership in the, in the post office, the local guy has no problem with that, then, you know, go for it. So kind of like sneak under the radar.
Maybe steps, right.
So lots of, lots of things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, much appreciated. All right, up next, we have.
We've got Tim on.
I was just going to say.
Can we take him out of?
Yeah, if the board doesn't mind, we'll do the water abatement next, so Tim doesn't have to stay here all night. Water abatement for Bridge Street property, discussion and vote is in your packets.
Is the homeowner here?
I do not believe so, but Tim is.
Tim, do you want to give us the overview here?
Can we just make a motion?
Yeah, Tim Olson, DPW director. It's very, actually very similar to the previous abatement. There was a, there's a meter pit with a lengthy service line, several, there was a, there was a leak that was noticed in the meter pit. When we went to go repair, it was noticed that there was an actual electrical line in the meter pit, that we could not make those repairs until that line was moved. It took National Grid a lengthy time to get out, to make those repairs. Once that line was removed, we made the repairs to the meter, thinking that that was the only leak on that line. It was evident that it wasn't the next billing cycle. And Burr Clark, the property owner, talked to us, he called us, we told him the best situation for him would be to hire a leak detector company to come in. He did that, he paid for it out of pocket, found the leak on the line, and made, and paid for a contractor to come in and make the repairs timely. So there was no evidence, again, it's very, it's a small leak, but over a period of time, it's a, it's a lot of water that's used, but nothing was evident inside, no pressure issues, no discoloration. It was more that we saw the leak when we read the meter. That is a pit, so we actually physically opened the lid of the pit and read the meter, and we could see the leak going on. So we were under the impression that there was one leak, as well as the owner of the property. Like I said, they made arrangements to make that repair, but there was actually another leak in the line. Once that was determined, he did make those repairs timely, and since then, those repairs are made, and usage has gone back to previous normal use.
All right. Phil, you were going to say something?
I was going to make a motion to approve the water abatement at 440, 440 Bridge Street in the amount of $500 for the application.
Second, okay.
Could I just comment on this, though? This is kind of a unique situation, because it did span two different quarters. But there was actually, in the abatement package that I sent in, there was actually two, two quarters that was affected by this leak, or a series of leaks on the same water line. So I think what the resident was looking for was a, the $500, because both of them are over that maximum, he was looking for a $500, you know, a minimum of a $500 abatement for both those.
So did everybody get that? So this, this was over two billing cycles?
Right.
So the person who's asking for the abatement is asking for 500 from, right, twice?
But under either policy, you're still only allowed to apply.
At once.
Once.
Right.
Yeah, we have in the past allowed both if it was under the, like a same initial, same situation.
If it's the same issue, we've let it carry over two billing cycles.
Over billing, so, yeah, two billing cycles. I wouldn't say that this is one leak, then, as much as it seems like it was two different leaks, I would say it probably happened about the same time. There must have been some type of pressure issue, old line, old infrastructure that caused multiple leaks. Like I said, I think they felt, they felt like they fixed the leak at the meter, but it wasn't evident after the, you know, the next billing cycle that they had not fully fixed, you know, the problem.
So we have a motion, we have a second, and.
Further discussion, it sounds like.
Further discussion, so.
Let me rescind my motion.
Yeah, if you.
I've got a motion to approve a $1,000 water abatement for 440, 440 Bridge Street per the application.
For both billing cycles, you're saying?
$1,000 total.
I'll second it if you don't want to.
Go for it.
Second.
All right, second by Jamie, obviously further discussion, I'm guessing. Further discussion away.
The net result's the same, and it's cleaner. If it's $1,000 for one billing cycle, it's truer to the policy.
Yes, right, right.
I was going to suggest that.
It gets you the same result that you were looking.
Right, and because our past practice has really been one abatement.
It's one abatement for $1,000.
If we, right, if we make it one abatement for the $1,000, it's still, the abator is still getting the same.
But our policy.
But it's within our policy.
If anything, over 500 bucks needs to be approved by the board, and we're in theory approving it, but I wish the homeowner was here, but I'm still.
Zoda wrote a lengthy letter, though.
Yes. All right, no further discussion from me.
Any further discussion from this end of the table?
I guess, yeah, no.
So a message, you have the public listening to you, Tim. We've had two of these now in the last month. What should homeowners do that have 300-foot-long water lines that seem to be in the age of their, whatever age it is, they're, these are, what do you recommend that these homeowners do? How do you avoid this?
Well, it's tricky, you know.
Can you put a sensor on your meter?
Because.
That, that shows overuse, overspin?
I mean, it, like I said, it's tricky, because if their meter is in the meter pits near the roadway, they're not actually that easy to access. It's not like they can just pop the lid and see if there's a, if there's a leak or the meter's spinning. Some of these lengthy lines are aged, and even the smallest leak over time can add up, but they won't show any significant impact in the home regarding pressure issues or discoloration. So there can be a lot of time that goes by, at least three months, obviously, between billing cycles that.
But can they buy something that they put in their meter that allows them to read it themselves? Is there, is there a part that they can put down there and?
So, so not, not on these meters, a lot of the pit meters are older. There are newer meters that can read, you know, we can, that could be installed, that they can read via an app, an app on their phone or a computer. They are pricey, they are something we don't carry, but if it's something that they want to spend, if, you know, we have to replace the meter, they can, they can maybe spend the difference and get something like that put in, as long as it works with our infrastructure and our software.
We've had two homeowners spend over $7,000 for water, so I got to imagine these meters cost less than seven, I got to imagine the risk reward is good. So what I'm saying, I wouldn't talk people out of looking at the expensive, a more expensive meter if it's going to save them.
But the meters are worth a couple grand or so, isn't that right? Am I right on that?
Depends on what the meter is, yeah. I mean, as long as, I mean, I could do some of the, some research and see what type of meters would work that way with our current software.
I'd like to have a solution that we can put out to our residents, because this, we've seen two, right? So we shouldn't just let this go and think it's not going to happen again. We have lots of long pathways, we have lots of technology, we should be able to offer technology that.
Right. So I was just side-chatting to Joe here, we have our annual water rate hearings in January.
Yeah.
And I would suggest that maybe we, as much as I don't want to revisit it, we look at our abatement policy again, and just make sure we're got everything the way we want, because I don't want to keep having the abatement discussion every time. I want it to be pretty clear for everybody, including the board and people that are abating, that it's, you know, it's a one-time abatement, it's a $500 cap, or whatever the circumstances are. You know, I guess I have an issue abating after the meter between the house, that's the homeowner typically, so, you know, and like you said, the meter thing, we could offer a, here's what a meter cost would be if you think your lines are old to monitor it yourself, but.
We're giving them credit towards a, give a final credit towards a new meter, but yeah, we can't just ignore it, because it seems like it's going to happen more and more with our old water lines, so.
Right.
But the homeowners have no way of knowing when it's a meter 300 feet of their property.
And Tim, you can attest to this, in neighborhoods like mine where we've repaved the road, at the time the repaving was done, I had the option to update my water line from the road to the house and the meter and everything like that, and a lot of people took advantage of that. I didn't, because I know what I'm doing, but.
Right, right. But also, I mean, we're only really talking about the residents that have meter pits. Otherwise, a lot of the meters are within the home.
Right.
So they could, if they're accessible, they could go down into their basement or to their crawl space, or whatever they want to do, and actually look at the meter.
Get reading themselves.
And make sure that it's not spinning. This one, these that are in the pits, they, like I said, it's very, they're not the easiest place to get into. A normal resident would have a trouble getting into a meter pit. It takes our guys sometimes, a couple guys to get in there, just because of corrosion or, or they're buried underneath the ground, or frozen dirt, or, or sometimes they're full of water and frozen to shut, so. Some of the, some of the other residents that have offered to replace their water line and their water service that had meter pits, if they've done, you know, if they've produced and paid for a new service, I have then placed the water meter inside the house. if they've produced and paid for a new service, I have then placed the water meter inside the house.
Right.
And not within the pit. So, but that gives us, you know, some comfort and I guess some realization that the service is new. You know, and obviously it could, there could be a leak, but it's newer, there's comfort in that.
How many water meters do we have in, how many water meter pits do we have in town if you had to guess? Is it 10 or is it 1,000?
No, I would say it's probably maybe 30.
So two out of the 30 have been a problem?
They're old. Their lines are old. The service lines, you know, that one at Bridge Street is probably 300 yards long.
I know, so I'm saying, like, can we send, can we send a letter to the 28 other residents with a solution of what they should do? I mean, it's, it's cost this town thousands of dollars in the last month. And the homeowner's thousands of dollars.
Yeah, to Bill's point, I wonder if we can be proactive with those, say, 30 folks and just say, we'll do a, even when you have a little DPW break, have them go by and just check the meter. Just see, you know, if it's corroded, if it's, and give them just the, hey, this looks great, or hey, you're gonna need to get, time to get a, time to move fast, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, every time we read, we have to access them, so we have a pretty good idea of what the condition are. You know, and we do look to see if they're spinning, if they're, you know, so it's not gonna be a period of, like I said, it's gonna be a few months in between reads.
Right, and there's no way you can tell that, that, you can't determine the condition of the line, but you can at least see that.
Two of these, two of 30 have gone. Yeah, it's, you're a risk now for, I'm trying to be proactive. For 28 letters, it seems like.
But the leaks are in the line between the water meter.
The leaks are in the line, not the meter.
The key is being able to monitor the meter.
If the meter's running, you should be able to have a meter, you can tell the meter's running. And so with all the technology we have right now, if you can't put a meter in your system that allows you to have an app on your phone as your meter's running, I'm sure there's a solution, it might be expensive, but it's still a lot cheaper than a $7,000 water bill. So that's my point.
True.
Yeah, as long, as long as we can find one that works with our system. You know, that's, that's the, that's the trick. And I don't mind researching that and offering the, you know, the group the option, I mean, I don't think we can require it, but.
No, no, I know.
No, but if we offer the option and they don't take advantage of it, then that might.
That happens, then I feel better.
That might predispose the select board against giving them a water abatement.
Exactly.
They were offered an alternative to avoid it.
With the $500 highlighted.
Right, right.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Yep, thanks, Tim. So we have a motion.
Yeah.
We have a second. Any further further discussion? Seeing none?
I mean, the reason we're giving them 1,000 instead of the 500 is because we feel like it.
Not, I mean, in theory, it's because they fixed it, but they didn't fix it. Wasn't like they didn't fix it for two months, they fixed it and there was still a leak, once again. And once, and we're giving it because we didn't limit it to 500, we just said, if it goes over 500, we need to approve it. That's what we keep fretting about. The discussion was, it gives us flexibility without having people just come to us for any, any crazy number they want, so. But I'm approving it because it was, it was, it was they fixed it.
They thought they fixed it.
They thought they fixed it. No fault of theirs. They did the right thing.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, thank you, Tim.
Sure.
All right, back to approvals of annual license renewals, discussion and vote. We have several things up here.
Yeah, if you want, I can help. You have alcohol licenses, you have common victrola licenses, you have two entertainment licenses, and you have one class-two motor vehicle sales license. I can, if you'd like, I can read the.
Yeah, why don't we kinda do them?
By category?
By category, and then it all, why don't I just say, okay, up first we have alcohol licenses renewals, and they are?
Myopia Hunt Club, Weathervein Tavern, American Legion, AP Gardner Post, 15 Walnut, The Post Restaurant, Community Package Store, Crosby's Marketplace, Hamilton Convenience, Honeycomb, A&amp;M Convenience and Harrigan's.
All right, and then I would entertain a motion to approve those renewals. So moved.
Second.
And I'd just like to add that all the proper paperwork has been submitted by all of these entities, including.
They're all up to date.
The et cetera that we haven't got to.
All their inspections, all their fees, everything is ready to go. They wouldn't be here tonight if they weren't.
Correct. All right. Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Up next, we have common victrola license renewals, and they are?
American Legion, AP Gardner Post, The Post Restaurant, Five Suns Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, Crosby's Marketplace, Hamilton Convenience, Hamilton House of Pizza, Myopia Hunt Club, Weathervein Tavern, The Community House, 15 Walnut Tavern, Cumberland Farms and Honeycomb.
Anybody wanna make a motion to approve those common victrola license renewals?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Second by Caroline, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a reason that one wouldn't be on the second that was on the first?
Yes, because.
Different.
Versus alcohol.
Yeah.
Was the Weathervein on the second one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, they were both.
Yeah, both, yeah.
In the same order because they're license numbers.
Got it.
They're listed by license numbers.
Up next, we have entertainment licenses, which are?
American Legion, AP Gardner Post and 15 Walnut.
And a motion to approve said licenses. A second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and last but not least, class-two license renewals.
A&amp;M Motors.
All right. Motion to approve A&amp;M Motors' class-two license renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Second, so. There's more than, so what does, what requires a class-two? Aren't there more than one motor repair shop in town?
I don't think this is for repair.
That's for, that's for selling out.
Those are selling autos.
This is for selling.
It's for selling, yes.
Yeah, used car sales.
Yep.
I don't think that they're currently doing any of that, but they're trying to keep their license in good state.
Gotcha, okay. We've had a couple of applications in the past, as you might remember from being on the board a little bit longer, that were a little bit iffy and we've refused them.
Yeah, I remember, because I remember, I've looked this up before.
Yeah. All right. Did we have a motion to?
I seconded it.
Second by Caroline, a second by Bill.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Don't forget, we gotta sign all these documents.
So Joe, there was nobody missing, right?
No, everybody, everybody that had a license that needed to be renewed, they got their paperwork in on time. Lori did, Lori had a lot of success this year getting in touch with people, people got back quickly. We were in good shape this year, yeah.
All right, goal-setting and evaluation for the town manager discussion and vote. Tom was spearheading that, it's in your packets.
Well, what's in?
I think at the end, right?
Yeah.
It's the last couple of pages.
Last couple of pages, right.
All right.
Do we wanna discuss this, or do we wanna wait for Tom to discuss?
So what was the next step between the document that I provided that's on page 27, 28, and the document that Tom provided in 29 and 30? Because I thought we went ahead and prioritized them relative in that meeting last.
29 and 30 is not what Tom.
Yeah, no, it isn't, that's what I was gonna say. I didn't think, I didn't see anything from Tom myself, so.
He said it's an Excel spreadsheet, I thought, he told me he was gonna send one to you. He sent it to me. He said he was gonna send it to you.
Maybe it didn't get farther than that.
Right.
All right, so.
Like to table this until Tom gets back.
Perfect.
But he did, there was a spreadsheet, I'll make sure you have it, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
He spent some time, it looked pretty good.
All right, so we'll discuss that next time with, with Tom when he's here and all of us. And up last, we have new business. The only thing we had was a request from Helen, I forget her last name, for a sign for the North Shore Nordic Trail Association. They were hoping to put a sign up tomorrow until March 15th or something like that.
So what does that mean?
Yeah, what value does that serve?
Where's that gonna go?
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts.
But we can't vote on it. Or we can, he said they wanna put it up tomorrow.
They wanna put it up tomorrow.
But.
She emailed me yesterday.
There's no posting requirements.
There's not, okay.
You can, you can take that, it's up to you.
So we make a motion and?
Well, so let's make a motion, then we can discuss.
Make a motion, let the trail.
Sure, Nordic Association, Nordic, right?
Sure, Nordic.
North Shore Nordic Association, yeah.
Place a sign on the patent tennis courts until the end of March 2023.
I think it was mid-March, so let's say March 15th.
March 15th.
Let me find my email, so I'm not talking on a turn here. Bill's gonna hate me because I just used up all the bandwidth opening my computer up here.
It's March 15th, according to the email.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. So we've, we've.
I made a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right, further discussion. So we've, we've had this in the past, and this is an organization that, let's see, who started it? It's been around about five years plus now. It's cross-country skiing and it's a, Patton Homestead has some trails across.
The snowmobile and the.
Snowmobile, they groom it with the snowmobile and stuff like that. I don't remember how long we've let them have the banner up before, if it's been December, the March or whatnot. And to Caroline's point, I don't know how many people see it and say, oh.
The challenge I have is that this feels like advertising to me, whereas like the other ones are, and I have not been here for a long history, but like, you know, requests to celebrate athletes in the schools, messages from Public Safety or Public Works. Whereas they are a volunteer organization, but it feels like they're asking for us to, to advertise their organization vis-à-vis this banner on our fields or on our tennis courts. And I just don't know what the precedent is for that, and so does that mean that?
And I don't disagree with you, because I actually have a different, I was actually gonna make it before this was on the agenda, but I'll respond to yours and I'll make my comment.
Yeah.
Agree with you, this happens to be a volunteer organization.
Yeah, I know.
So do we have, do we have to have some sort of, because my issue is that although I love what they did across the street, and I walk, Community House did, they're now using that fence to put banners on the fence. And so every week is a different banner on the fence.
Yes.
And I'm not in favor of that, because who knows what's gonna happen with that?
I think we should have a conversation with the Community House about that.
So it's like, we're voting on a banner, but they just go put whatever banner they want, whatever concert or event, which I promote it, they have, but they already have a board. So they got the board and then they got the banners. So anyways, I think we need to think about, right, advertising in town and what that means and what the pros and cons of it.
Visual impact.
And especially now that we're talking about investing a bunch of money to make our town more appealing and attract business and whatnot. So it's a whole discussion, but, but that was my thought. But, yeah, I agree with you, like, when, like, what is this, what is a public service sign?
Yeah.
And what is an advertisement?
It would be very similar to your point in having ECTA come to us and ask us to put an ECTA banner about the trails in town for bridal pass and et cetera.
Do we have a picture of what the sign looks like?
No.
It's also four by eight, does that meet our criteria?
That's a big one.
It's a big, pretty big. Eight feet is taller than James.
That's like the size of the water.
And I guess my, my kind of follow-ups were, I can't remember, and I should know because I've been here forever.
Ever.
Ever. What is our time period, I think, our past practice on what's the window that we've had? It's, and, and some of them have gone way past, like the tennis one went way past, the elderly abuse one went way past. I thought we had a window of time that they were up for with zoning and.
That's where one went away and then came back again, and we never voted on it, so I don't even sure we're putting them off, but. The stop elderly abuse went away and then came back.
Right.
And it came back bigger.
Yeah, so it must be a problem.
So the, assuming, assuming this is the updated.
Current policy.
The current policy. It's supposed to be for a minimum amount of time and generally, generally for not more than a period of two weeks. And it, it like says, there shall not be a non-town banner on the tennis courts.
Okay. There shall not, that's a double negative, can you make that into a sentence for me, please?
Thou shalt not hang.
There shall not be a.
Thou shalt not not?
I got confused by double negative.
Not be a non-town. Non, all right. Non-town banners may not be hung on the tennis courts or above the roadways. Non-town.
So, so is Norsh, do we, do we fund North Shore Nordic Association or non-town money?
They're a nonprofit.
When they don't get their money from our, from town, from tax money? No, then that's the end of the question. Because I think you said that.
I think that's it then, right? If we look at our policy, that's our policy, and from now on, we should stick to our policy if we're gonna enforce it tonight. And then also two weeks, right? That's the other part of it?
It does, it does give you a little bit of an out, general, that one's a general. The other, the other one's a prohibition, but it's generally not more than a period of two weeks.
What's currently up there?
Too much.
Yeah.
Why don't I take a, why don't we take a survey of that tomorrow?
Well, once again, this is a problem. This is a problem, we all drove by it today.
And no one looked.
And no one knows what's up there, because it just, after a while, you just stop seeing them because you've seen them all the time.
Did the pickleball wind nets go up?
I don't know.
They weren't up the last one I played on the court.
Typically, years ago, when I was first on the board, really the only thing that went up there was the vote, get out the vote and the water ban. That was all that was allowed up there. And for some reason, at some point, it started to be North Shore Nordic and whoever else applied was granted.
Yeah, you got me on, on pickleball wind nets. Are those really going up? I didn't know that.
I doubt they'll go up before the spring now, though.
Yeah.
Pickleball's gonna be played in the winter, I'm not sure.
I play in the winter. Just don't. We keep our balls in a cooler full of warm water.
Do some calisthenics.
Shh, shh. So, all right, so.
I think we have to say no because of our policy.
I think we have to say no.
Someone wants to come to us and propose a new policy, let someone come to us and propose a new policy. But at this point, our policy is to say no.
All right.
Because the Community House, is it technically, are they beholden to our policy or do they have?
Community House is beholden to our zoning.
Zoning, which doesn't allow you.
Which doesn't allow that.
It has signage, so we'll have, I'll have, I'll refer this building inspector to speak to the Community House about their signage and.
They could seek permission, I believe, but.
Do you want to, do you wanna vote negatively on the motion or do you wanna rescind your motion?
Do you want a negative vote on your motion or do you wanna rescind it?
Negative, negative?
Double negative again.
Well, you, you've said to, did you say to approve it when you made your motion?
He made the motion to approve.
You made the motion to approve it.
Yeah, this is, I'll just vote on the motion.
And just deny the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh.
My first time.
Are you ready?
I think so.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those in favor, in, not in favor of the motion, say nay.
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 How about that?
I'm used to it during the meeting.
All those abstaining, nobody. Motion does not carry. Any other new business?
Updating our banner and sign policy.
Well, I mean, because the, the, once again, the baseball, Little League, they, you know, they would like to make, they wanna come in front of us at some point, and they would like to make money by selling, you know, banner space on, in the baseball fields there, so. All right, so, but they haven't come to us yet, but that's.
To Jamie's point, do we want to revisit our signage and policy?
Talk to people who, I think people who, it advances to them, should come to us with a proposal.[1687.98] People who, I think people who, it advances to them, should come to us with a proposal, right? That's usually how it goes, right? We, I wouldn't think about unless someone comes and convinces us that's the right thing to do and what the benefits of it are. For us, the benefit is keeping how it is.
Because Cheesman is under Wenham's jurisdiction, so we could find out what they did, but. Yeah, it seems a little bit of a Pandora's box unless we have a very clear vision of what we want these spaces to be.
Can you imagine that whole tennis court fence being covered with banners?
Yeah.
So we could do it like we encouraged the ConsCon to do, we could just update it for easy stuff, like if we're not gonna require insurance certificates.
Right, because right now, we do.
Which by the way, we mocked a bit, except for the, was it, at the end of the summer, there was one that was hanging by one thread, and I was like, well, if it blew into the road.
Yeah.
That's why you have an insurance policy.
Well, I think what we, what Joe had said, or at least what I remember is, our insurance.
Covers it.
Covers it.
Yep.
So we could still require other people so that our, so that we don't get claims for other people's stuff, but we, I, I mean, we just need to make a decision. I'm not saying we should get rid of that requirement, I just mean, we either need to have the requirement and enforce it, or.
Right.
Also, too many banners and you can't watch your children on the playground while you play tennis, so we should be mindful of that as well.
That's a good point, though.
Yeah, we don't obstruct the view.
Even though it's self-serving, but I think, I think it's a good point.
Yeah, so I think that we should invite, I think that, that at some point, when things, invite people that want to put banners there when we rewrite the policy, so it only do it once.
Yeah.
And we can choose whether to include it or not, but at least we have all the information.
And we, we could make it similar to our flag policy. That it's, you know, like it says in the policy kind of now, that it's only town-sponsored government type of speech on it.
That one was easy to get through, so I would.
I'd actually, I'd actually endorse that idea. I think it.
Right, so it's a very similar policy.
It has to come from the select board members.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's why I kind of said it. I mean, we did, it took us a hot second to get through that policy, but, but now that we have it, it's.
Well, since Tom's not here, let's let him know that he's responsible for the update of.
That sounds low.
The banner policy.
Jamie?
Aye.
Never mind, I'll just, I'll save those comments for, for when we, for when we actually deal with this policy.
I think what you meant to say is, I move to a.
I think we've all agreed that we should put on new business, a rewrite or a revisit of the banner policy, however, prior to doing that, we should get some involvement from community leaders, i.e. Little League, baseball, whatever other sports, to see if there's.
I'm trying to think who's kind of solicited us for signs in the past. It's North Shore Nordic, the League of Women Voters, tennis.
So, so Little League, they want, they want to put signs.
They come to me.
They want to put them along the fence.
Yeah, but, but still, same thing, it's, it's.
Right. I guess I'm thinking, I was thinking specifically tennis courts, but we should be thinking a little more holistically, right, so.
We should also just keep an eye on it, because there have been some up there that I don't think came to us.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, then we should get them removed.
We need official town.
Scissors.
Snippers. We just go in the dead of night. We won't even bother Tim, we'll do it ourselves.
All right, Jamie made a motion.
Second, I second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, if you're still.
So thank you, bro.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Receiver?
Thanks, Duke.